So Miranda, I believe only Mayor Protem Baumhofer is going to be absent this evening.
Correct, that's all I've heard from.
Okay, so we'll give a few more minutes here for Alan and Eric to dial in. All right, um, oh, I saw Alan, there he is, yep. So by my reckoning, we have as many trustees who are going to be attending tonight. And we have, it looks like a fairly full room of members of the public. So welcome everyone tonight. And I suppose at 7:03 PM, we will call to order this final Board of Trustees meeting for 2020 on December 15th, 2020. Miranda, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Yeah.
Trustee Kuns Ismail.
Here.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Danforth. I'll come back. Trustee Corvillan. Trustee Danforth and Trustee Corvillan? Oh, I thought, okay. Yep, but I don't see Trustee.
Tanya was here earlier.
Yep, but it looks like she is off now, so she's absent at the moment.
Okay.
Let's see, did she jump back on? Not yet. I'll make note of when she jumps back on.
Okay, uh, yeah.
Unless you wanna wait to start the meeting?
Let's give her a minute or two, just in case. I hate to have her, you know, if she has questions about the consent agenda or early meeting stuff, give her a second here, since we are, you know, it's still before five after, so we're still well in mountain time for this meeting.
Yay. I'll send her a message, too. I know she was recently having some phone issues.
Oh.
Trustee Corvillan, are you there? I saw you jumped back on. Can you hear us?
I think I am now.
Okay, you're there.
Okay, good. We didn't want to move ahead without you, Tanya. Welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so we have all but Mayor Protem Baumhofer with us this evening. So we have three items on the consent agenda, the minutes, the warrants, and our annual re-upping of leases for the community center. If anyone has any, if any members of the Board of Trustees have questions or comments on the consent agenda, otherwise do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Trustee Danforth. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trustee Taylor, I second.
We have a motion to second. Miranda?
Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
All right, uh, so the consent agenda has passed, passes. Uh, we will move on to public comment on non-agenda items, of which we have four items in the packet this evening. Thank you for those who reached out in the last two weeks to send us those comments. Um, now would be the opportunity for anyone from the public who is dialed in, who would like to speak and to do so, you'll have three minutes, simply state your name and whether or not you are a town resident. Uh, this is, raise your hand, start speaking, somehow catch our attention, and you can have the floor for three minutes.
So Kathleen Chippai had emailed us a comment that I was gonna read into the record right now.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, Kathleen Chippai, seventeen-year business owner and thirty-year Magnolia resident. She says, "I agree and support Ned's non-agenda public comment about reconsidering one-way streets and to delay the Jefferson Street sidewalk project, if in fact it is scheduled to start when temps are too low for concrete anyways. And I just heard the mayor told some local businesses that the BOT is going to pass an emergency rule penalizing businesses if people take their mask off inside their business. I think this is not a good idea, as businesses are already struggling and are not responsible for what some patrons might do. I'm sure, it sure seems like some, another knee-jerk reaction to one incident that occurred over two weeks ago, and no one is dead, and I have been unable to confirm anyone got it at the business cited. So far Boulder County says there were eighteen COVID cases in Netherland and no deaths by COVID. The recovery rate for COVID for the majority of people is ninety-nine point five percent. People who are more susceptible to COVID should continue to stay socially distanced, and people who are more susceptible to depression and suicide need to interact, or suicide becomes more deadly than COVID for Netherland. We have a history of suicides and overdose before COVID, humans and human interaction. Let's all be respectful of each other's needs. I also agree and support Susan Wagner's letter per the CPo final recommendations for Netherland."
Okay, thank you, Miranda. But it's normally not our policy to directly address public comment during a meeting and right after, but I think one of the lessons we've learned from the national scene over the last five years, and particularly over the last month and a half, is that there's a great danger inherent in not responding to the propagation of falsehoods and lies. I'm not exactly clear on which alternative reality Ms. Chippai is inhabiting tonight, but her statement that she levied towards me couldn't be more wrong. I'm, had no such conversations with businesses, I suggested no such thing, and were such a proposal to be made at the board level, I would oppose it. Uh, so I mean, we've seen the dangers of misinformation, um, and I think it's really becoming clear that it's incumbent upon us all to speak out against it whenever we hear it, see it, or read it. So I'm going to do that tonight to basically just state that what she had read into the record regarding myself is entirely false. So. Any other members of the public like to speak on non-agenda items? And I am not seeing any hands raised or people logging in. So we will move on to our first informational item of the night, which is an update from the Community Planning Assistance for Wildlife group, a presentation from them. And I believe I saw the two individuals who will be presenting, Kelly Johnston and Molly Maury are online.
We are.
All right, I see Kelly and Molly both on video, so welcome and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having us.
The, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. And Miranda helped me out a bit for a sec here.
You should, yeah, at the bottom, you should be able to just click Share and then select your PowerPoint, fingers crossed.
Oh, there it is, sharing the screen, selecting my PowerPoint, turning it on. There we go. Um, okay.
We don't, we don't see it yet, unfortunately.
Okay.
Did it, did I have to double-click it?
It's still trying, oh, share.
Did it pop up like the Share Content window? There we go.
Okay. Okay, how was that?
Perfect.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you, Board of Trustees and members of the public for having us. Molly Maury and myself are, we comprise the Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire team that worked with the, worked with the Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire Steering Group, which consisted of Fire Chief Richter, Miranda Fisher, Cynthia Bach, and Rick Henrickson. Um, and we, um, over the last almost a year, spent time, spent time with, with the, with the steering group in identifying land use planning issues directly related to wildfire that the, the stakeholders wanted to prioritize and be addressed through recommendations that we have provided and you have in your agenda package. Um, so we're going to summarize some of those recommendations, summarize the work that we did and the recommendations, and then follow up with some questions. Um, but first, I wanted to allow, first of all, Molly to introduce herself, and then I'll follow.
Thanks, Kelly. I serve as the Lead Land Use Planner for the Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire program, and happy to be here this evening again. I know we presented, I think it was back in May, so it's nice to come full circle at the end of this process and share with you our recommendations.
Thanks, Molly, and I'm Kelly Johnston, and I'm, I serve as the Lead Forestry, Fire Behavior, and Wildfire Risk Expert on the CPo team, and currently the Project Lead for the Netherland CPo Project. Molly?
Sure, so just to put this in context, I think we mentioned this the, on our first presentation, but we wanted to recognize that our process fits into a much larger set of activities, many of which the town and Fire Protection District are already undertaking. Um, so we, where was we focused on land use planning, more specifically? We just want to acknowledge that we aren't proposing that everything can be achieved through planning and codes, but this fits into a larger set of activities and mitigation strategies that help communities achieve fire adaptation, so learning how to live with fire. Um, so that is our, our general approach to this process. And we work across the country. This year, we selected six different communities, one of them being Netherland. You can see the others highlighted here. And our assistance varies based on what the opportunities are at the local level. So we're excited to share tonight what our, you know, findings were for the town, but these will be very different from a county, obviously, like Los Angeles or Baker County in Florida. So we are excited that we can provide that level of customization, and a lot of it is reflected on what we hear and learn from the stakeholders. In this case, as Kelly mentioned, it was the steering group, um, and we're really grateful for their input along the way, because it makes our process more applicable to what the local needs really are.
So following through with the, the process that Molly mentioned and the process that we presented at the beginning of the, the project earlier this spring, um, we spent the last year coordinating with the stakeholder group, which was in this case, the steering committee, the steering group that we mentioned. And we did come out for an in-person, we managed to make it out for an in-person, distance, outdoor site visit and field tour. Um, and over the, over the past several months, we spent lots of time sifting through the documents and analyzing what they say and, and as far as outcomes and how that can feed into our recommendations. We also provided a half-day online training, um, that we, that we titled "The Wildfire Ignition Susceptibility Basics and Community Planning Tools." Um, there is a recorded version of that training session that is available for anyone that would like to follow up with it. Um, and, uh, now we're at the point where we've gotten to the final recommendations that we're presenting tonight. So we'll just go through some of the findings that we, that we, after all of the document review and, and discussions with the, with the steering group and our field tour. Uh, and by all means, when we get to our recommendations, um, if you require any clarification, please feel free to ask. Otherwise, we will have a time for questions at the end of our presentation. Um, the first finding was that we, and I think this is not new to you, um, that there is a significant wildfire history in and around Netherland. There's been recent fires and a long history of fires in and around Netherland, Netherland and throughout the county and the region. And as you recently experienced, there were two, two very large fires, uh, the two of the largest fires in Colorado history that burned well outside the, what we would call the kind of the normal burning period um, this year. Um, and when we look at the way that, uh, where, where we're looking at what is the wildland-urban interface and, meaning what, what development can be affected by wildfire and what can't, we came to the determination that the entire town of, of Netherland is actually in the wildland-urban interface, meaning that the entire town could be impacted by wildfire, uh, depending on the location and behavior of the fire. Um, in reviewing the, the municipal code and other documentation, um, specifically with the, um, concept, addressing the concept of the structure ignition zone, which is, which is the, the critical zone, including the structure, that, that really determines the susceptibility of a structure or home to wildfire uh, and the, uh, the codes that, that govern that, the, the current municipal codes that govern that. Um, we did find, um, that there was, um, in relation to what we just discussed, there was some inconsistencies in geographic application. Um, there weren't, uh, some consistent and, there weren't consistent and comprehensive structure ignition zone requirements that could be applied throughout the town. And the requirements that were there were, are currently inconsistent with the surrounding Boulder County wildland-urban interface requirements. Uh, and finally, um, we heard again from the team that, eh, that there is a requirement for capacity to, to address these, um, to address the, the, um, regulatory approach to the structure ignition zone. And that capacity is available, um, with the Netherland Fire Protection District in order to help the town out with that. We also found, um, that there was a significant concern from the stakeholder holders with regards to, uh, the Big Spring subdivision and having only one access and egress point, with, uh, in relation to, uh, the potential fire threat to the subdivision. So this ends up presenting significant challenge to fire suppression access and life safety concerns with regarding to resident evacuation, uh, at the furthest reaches of the subdivision. And Molly?
Thanks, Kelly. We also looked at the comprehensive plan and the, which was last updated in 2013, and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which was last updated in 2011. And we found that there were no policies in the comprehensive plan specifically focused on wildfire. We also found, uh, conversely, in terms of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, that there obviously were a lot of recommendations for wildfire risk reduction, but they didn't really feed into any of the town's existing planning and regulatory efforts. So in other words, there aren't any linkages between these two documents, even though there could be. This is not really unique to the town of Netherland and the Fire, uh, Netherland Fire Protection District. This is something that we commonly see, but it's something that we like to call attention to because it's a real opportunity to, you know, marry these two documents in a more meaningful way that can address long-term implementation of, um, risk reduction to development.
And speaking of opportunities, um, we're now gonna shift into the recommendations that we made specifically, that specifically addressed the findings we just mentioned. The first recommendation, um, is to update the wildland-urban interface requirements to align with the, with Boulder County's requirements. So this would entail, um, the best approach would entail adopting the, um, we, 2017 Boulder County Building Code, WUI, or wildfire zone requirements, into the Town Municipal Code for, uh, all new development. Um, it would entail also, um, identifying the entire town, the wildland-urban interface, meaning the code would apply to any new development within the entire area of the town. Um, this would, however, would require some reconciling of conflicts with other municipal code requirements. So looking through and making sure that adopting that requirement, um, didn't, or if it did, uh, conflict with one of the other municipal code requirements, it may need reconciling. Um, it would, um, result in, uh, in, in order to address the capacity concerns of this, it would end up resulting in a team approach to enforcement, um, with the building official, uh, enforcing the WUI Building Code requirements, so the actual building itself, and the Netherland Fire Protection District Fire Marshal enforcing the defensible space requirements surrounding the building. So that's typically out to one hundred feet or the property boundary, whichever is, is less. And in order to, uh, provide that supplementary capacity, we also recommend that the Netherland, uh, that the town of Netherland and the Netherland Fire Protection District officially engage in the Wildfire Partners Program that Boulder County is operating to, uh, benefit from the trained mitigation specialist and, uh, the parallel voluntary engagement process that that program offers. Rec, recommendation number two focuses on implementing a fuel break strategic wildfire access and potentially, in the near future, an egress route, um, for the Big Springs subdivision. After we walked through the area, uh, looked at the, the reports and, um, the terrain and, uh, all of the other factors that leading to, that we were presented, leading to, um, this, this concern, um, we came to the conclusion that the, the Doe Trail, uh, route that, uh, is, is probably the best first, uh, the best first priority to explore further. Um, it's because of its geographic position along a ridge and, um, because of the fuel conditions and the location at the very furthest point into the subdivision, it offered, uh, um, the most viable opportunity from, from our perspective. Um, and implementing this or looking at implementing it, first of all, as an effective fuel break uh, and fire suppression and, uh, access for fire suppression resources into the furthest, uh, furthest extent of the, um, private properties of the, of the subdivision would be the first approach. And in working with residents, uh, qualified professionals and the land management part, uh, partners to establish a safe connection, um, to the Doe Trail, Doe Trail egress route, um, would be, I think, a very beneficial, uh, exercise. And finally, um, as an additional and, um, second alternative route, working with land management partners to develop a, um, wildland, a, a route that connected Wildwood Lane, uh, with, um, Magnolia Road.
So our final recommendation goes back to the plans, the comprehensive plan and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And, you know, I should say, for those that might not be that familiar with the, or with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, otherwise known as a CWPP, these are voluntary plans. The benefits of doing and maintaining this kind of plan is that it incentivizes hazardous fuel reduction projects from other federal land management agencies. So in other words, if, um, land, it, private land is, is planned for under the CWPP and there's mitigation, the community has, um, the opportunity to work with federal partners and help influence where hazardous fuel treatments occur on those federal lands. So it's a really good tool for collaborating with federal partners. It's also a great tool for looking at the local level and seeing what can be done to reduce risk. Again, it's a voluntary plan. We know it was last updated in 2011, and so we provided some, some guidance on when both the comprehensive plan and the CWPP may get updated in the future, what type of policies to consider, and the type of connections between the two plans. Uh, so for example, and this is all, eh, you know, in detail in the report, obviously, but the type of considerations for comprehensive plan policies would focus on new and existing development. So in other words, not just what to do with what's coming in the future, but how to really address risk to the current development um, and strengthening the multi-hazard connections. So flood factored in largely in the current comprehensive plan, which we know why, because it was produced shortly after the time of the flood. Um, but, you know, we didn't want to overlook wildfire. So making some of those connections more would be beneficial in the updated comp plan. And then also promoting land management policies that integrate wildfire risk reduction with other ecological objectives. So we know the town's already collaborating with land management partners, and, you know, this wasn't really expressed in the comprehensive plan, though. So we made recommendations for how to integrate that, um, approach a little bit more in, in future policies. And then again, this diagram just shows what that relationship would be. So the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is that area where you can identify and assess the risk, and that feeds into both the planning process, the comprehensive plan to build those appropriate policies. It also can feed into how requirements or regulations get updated. So for example, Kelly talked a little bit more about the Building Code, the Municipal Code. So for example, Kelly talked a little bit more about the building code, the municipal code and voluntary programs such as wildfire partners. So we just wanted to show there's a broader relationship and that opportunity with the CWPP really is a connecting point across all the plans and uh regulations in the future.
And so that leads us to um some time for questions, I think. Miranda?
Miranda, I'm also wondering too if we would have the ability to invite any words from Chief Dur or Rick Henrickson or Cynthia or yourself, since you were engaged in our process. If there's anything else you wanted to add, um we'd welcome those comments as well.
Yeah, I think we have. I don't have much to add, but it looks like we have the three others if Rick, Rick or Cynthia wanted to chime in.
I can chime in um about the current status. I'm sorry, hold on. Okay. Or not. Anyhow, I'll chime in about the current status of both Wildwood and Doe Trail egresses. And so for the past several weeks, I've been working with the US Forest Service and um kind of have re-engaged uh their silver culturists, their chief ranger. And then today, uh a number of forest service personnel and myself uh rewalked the Wildwood area um as well as the Doe Trail egress areas. And uh we still believe that recommendation one of establishment of the fuel break along there um in the existing uh treatment zones is uh consistent with forest priority. Um we believe it's the safest route. Um and then the details of how to get that tied into Doe Trail and specifically whether we cross private land um with some type of easement agreement. Um or we end up constructing a bit of a zigzag down the hillside. Um so we're still looking at that and I'm still uh working with engineers to provide a couple options there. And uh there might be one that combines um a little bit of an option from the base and up the the uh gulch to the east. So so Doe Trail, I think, is progressing. Um once we have some uh solidity on that, I will certainly we're going to put that back into public forum. And I can tell you on the Wildwood route that we initially followed some of the mountain bike trails and said, yeah, let's just put it here. And after looking at that route with Google Earth, it puts us on a very, very steep, heavily timbered hillside and um felt like that was much more difficult to embrace. And so uh today, myself and a couple of the uh experts in wildland fire behavior, um we walked uh Wildwood version 2.0. And uh that links into some existing mitigation projects. And for those of you that know it, um it essentially starts there at that Wildwood cul-de-sac and goes out towards your 11 o'clock. And moves a bit east and then crosses into the areas that are already mitigated. And so I think it's a much more viable route. Um we're currently uh picking up our GPS data. And then once we have something solid and have some engineer uh concurrence that these are achievable, um we'll put this back into public forum so that the Big Springs residents can uh provide some commentary on it. Um as far as the rest of the um the CPo recommendations, uh I'm pretty excited. Um they certainly have identified some weaknesses, um perhaps in some of our planning stuff um in tying district efforts with town efforts. Um and so I fully support it and I'm pretty excited about it. So we appreciate your work.
Thank you, Chief.
This is Cynthia. I would just add uh it's good timing to get these CPo recommendations as we would be looking to update our comprehensive plan and to include elements like wildfire planning, hazard planning, water planning and other uh aspects like that. So it was great to work with CPo. It was a bit truncated in 2020 um necessarily because of 2020, but it was a great opportunity and I'm uh grateful to Kelly and Molly for the time they put into Netherlands.
Thanks Cynthia.
Thank you guys. Thank you for the presentation. Uh I want to open this up for any questions from the board of trustees that might have for you. And actually, I'm going to leave that off because I had one that came up as you were discussing, because I know you guys have worked with a half dozen or other or so other Colorado communities, uh one this year and several before. And one of your recommendations that obviously we were just discussing was this this question of the Big Springs egress. And I'm curious, as you've done, worked with these other communities, have you found other communities that have this sort of similar single entry exit point neighborhood? Um because I know one of the things we've been looking at is, you know, if if whether we go Doe Trail or Wildwood egress, obviously, the difficulty for us is going to be paying for that. And so one of the things I've been trying to do is find other communities in the state that are ha- have a similar issue that so perhaps we can better engage our federal representation, our congressman, and get some help at the federal level. So I'm curious if you've run into any other communities that have these single entry e- entry egress point neighborhoods like Big Springs.
Yes, and almost every single community we've worked with has has this challenge in in at least one of their subdivisions and and in most cases, multiple subdivisions, particularly counties. Um you know, they have it all over. So yes, um it's a common challenge because many of these subdivisions were were developed before there was knowledge of, you know, that that was probably a good thing to have was that secondary access. And as you pointed out, um you know, creating a secondary access is challenging from a financial perspective. If you're not somehow placing, having a need for that access to place homes along it, so. But it is a common problem, not just in the state, but across uh the entire continent.
Right. So that answer is awesome. Thank you.
I would also suggest too, when we we didn't work with Eagle County through the CPo program, but we've worked with them for in many other capacities. And they have a specific case study where they did create, I think they worked with CDOT and they created a secondary emergency access that they were able to get funding for. It was definitely a long process, but Eric Lovgren with the Eagle County would be a great comment act.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, uh other trustees have questions. I'm going to just work down the list, uh beginning with Trustee Apt.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. And uh I had a question for Rick. Did I just hear you say that you are now more optimistic about Wildwood than you were about Doe?
No, I still think Doe is the place to spend our time and effort. It res- represents our easternmost um viable egress and it presents a a much better control line for firefighting to prevent uh east-west spread there.
So even if there was a lot of mitigation in Wildwood, uh Doe would still be the better, the better choice?
I believe so. And and part of the discussion that we had today was relative traffic flow and number of residents and number of if everybody's taken both their cars and what that flow pattern looks like, and it may well be that we have to use both. And so I am more supportive of Wildwood with an alternative routing. And again, similar advantages to Doe, that it will tie into some of those circular patch cuts back there. And that might allow us to implement that into the forest service plans to provide a little semicircle of protection to that uh Wildwood loop of homes. So I'm a little more in favor of version 2.0, but it certainly doesn't uh supplant my commitment to the Doe Trail.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Alan. Uh Trustee Kums Ismail?
Hey, hello folks. Thank you for this. Uh this is going to be something really useful moving forward for us. I was just wondering if you had any thoughts uh regarding in particular, um uh it was Ms Wagner's comments in the uh public comment about a further development in the Big Springs area and other areas that might have only one egress route and whether or not uh you see fit to potentially restrict further development or if that's something that you would you would recommend we consider until there is a viable egress for that area. Just a, just a question there.
Eric, who are you sending that question to?
Sorry, that was to uh the uh the Kelly and Molly.
And Trustee Kums Ismail, I just want to jump in really quick, but Kelly did let Kelly respond, but Kelly actually did respond to Ms Wagner and I did forward that response to the board right now. He responded a couple hours.
Okay, I did not see that yet.
It's coming through right now, but I'll still let Kelly respond to that, but you'll also have that written.
I think um well, I'll I'll just preface this and then Molly, you can jump in if as the land use planner. But um we we did not that we, you know, when we prioritize, because of, you know, the time and and the the scope of we we asked um that the the steering group to provide us with, you know, their top priorities right now. And um so we didn't, we didn't do any analysis or provide recommendations specifically on, you know, whether there should be, you know, whether there should be development or not. That that sort of fell outside the um the the priorities that we were trying to address. Molly, I don't know if you want to um further on that statement?
I would just say that it would depend on a number of specific factors that are unique to the development. So you know, a number of communities we work with, more so in California, have developed specific thresholds on the number of units or lots that then require a secondary access. So if you're talking about a new development that may only be, you know, subdivision of five parcels, that may not warrant or be practical for a secondary access. However, if there's, you know, fast forward, let's say 20 years in the future and more land is annexed and there's a hundred unit subdivision, certainly that would be a different, uh I I think a very different discussion. So it really depends at that project level on the type of um number of units and even, you know, if it warrants a study on the evacuation um as well as other topographical features. So that would be um, you know, just a a quick response to that.
Just to follow up, are there are there any resources out there that you folks know of that um are best practices in these regards? Or is it really an evaluation on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, so normally, normally Kelly and I don't plug research that we're reports that we've written, but we have written a report for the American Planning Association called Planning in the Wildland Urban Interface. And it's a free PDF. I'd be happy to send it to Miranda after this to make sure you have access to that publication. It is broad in general, um but it does provide some discussion on best practices for uh the development of requirements or recommendations or considerations. And it also would be helpful for the comprehensive plan update as well.
Great, that would be a great resource. Thanks very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Eric. Uh Trustee Taylor?
Uh most of my questions have been answered. Uh I do like the idea of seeing Doe Trail as the priority and then also developing Wildwood. Um so I'm I'm feeling pretty comfortable with this. Thank you.
Trustee Dan?
Hi, thank you for the uh presentation. And um I agree, I think focusing on the egress is going to be very important for us moving forward. But I I wonder how important do you think it would be for us to maybe do a neighborhood-wide survey to get buy-in from all the people who are affected by this uh egress route? Um it seems like, you know, we have a few people that speak up against it. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't try to balance that perspective by talking to or getting responses from everybody within Big Springs? Would that be worthwhile for us?
Oh, I was going to say that I think public engagement is always helpful. You know, one thing we found with surveys is to also build in an educational component so that respondents really understand, you know, why this is an important priority, why it's being considered because that helps them make a more informed response to those type of survey questions.
And I'll I'll provide the um, I think we, I mean, there's definitely public engagement is very important. You know, that as Molly said, that one of the the primary, um one of the big benefits of it is to educate the public on the, you know, the technical issues. And the technical issue or the technical concern that I see and I think others see, other fire specialists see is that you have a very deep subdivision there with a long egress, one egress. And um I'll I'll be honest, that subdivision makes the hair stand up on the back of my neck.
Yeah.
And and so I think, you know, balancing definitely the the public concerns. Um I also feel that as a as a forester and natural resource person, always the ecological impacts have to be addressed um and the social impacts when you're when you're doing anything. So and that part, the only way you're going to, not the only way, but the one of the, one of the tools that you are going to find out what the social impacts are is through that public engagement. And then of course, the eco- so making sure that the um the concerns are 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 the the residents are able to voice their concerns, but it really relying on the expertise of the the science and the best practices for the both the ecological impacts, the engineering impacts and the and the potential wildfire impacts. And in trying to to, you know, uh address those public concerns or the social concerns that 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 residents bring up.
Do you think the the best avenue for this is um like flyers that are that are sent to the homes, um you know, are taped to their doors or something to get directly to the residents like that? And then have an online meeting of sorts to invite them to, or what what do you think is the best approach?
Yeah, Molly, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, um those are all good suggestions. You know, one of the groups that we have worked with, again, in a different capacity is called the WIREE team. And they're actually based out of Boulder and they have done a number of surveys with communities. And it's W-I-R-E. It stands for wildfire risk. Oh shoot, of course, I can't remember what it stands for now in its entirety, but um I think wildfire research, actually. Anyway, they have, you know, built on their social science backgrounds outreach. So that may be another resource for you to just kind of consider in the process of developing surveys. But truly, I think um, you know, holding to some extent, holding some type of outreach or multiple ways to reach the mem- the community members would be very beneficial in the in in conjunction with the survey tools themselves. Hopefully that made sense.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And what what did you say that website was for the the resource for the survey?
It's called WIREE, W-I-R-E, and um they are based out of Boulder. So I, let me see if I can call up the website for you and see if I can put it in the chat box or send it to Miranda.
I think I think I found it, wildfireresearchcenter.org?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, got it.
All right, thank you. Uh Trustee Corvallin? Tanya, still on mute? Nope, there we go. Off of mute. We can, you're back. I think.
I'm trying, I'm trying to mute.
We can hear you now.
Oh, there. I don't know what happened. Can you hear me?
We can. Go for it.
Okay, so I have several questions. Um so with regard to uh similar stuff about changing our building code to fit more like Boulder as well as um encouraging or maybe like making mitig- uh how should we go about doing that? And can we retroactively uh apply the code to buildings that have not yet been built but have been approved? Because I I'm seeing a lot- Because I, I'm seeing a lot of new construction in the town of Nederland just coming in like normal houses without any materials that are particularly fire resistant. And I, I'd love to see that happen now as opposed to waiting, you know. So can that be applied to buildings that have not yet been built, but already have been given permission to be built?
It's difficult, but one of the ways you can try to achieve that is with information that hands out to say, you know, this is what the new standards will be. We can't make you do this now, but we can at least inform you and educate you about why we think this is important, and you can build up to the standard.
Can we from today onward then ma- make that mandatory, or we have to pass it in the code first?
You, you typically, typically, you know, unless you're, you want to run into some, lots of challenges, typically what you would do is adopt it as a code first and then say, you know, from the point that the code is adopted forward, any, any new building for your development would, would be subject to that.
Sounds like that should be maybe coming up next in our agenda, something like that. So then I'm also concerned about, because here we talk about Big Springs so much. And when you drive around, I would say over 50% of the homes have done very little mitigation on their own and don't do anything at all. Why should we do all this effort for a neighborhood that isn't even trying on their own? How can we make every home in Nederland adhere to a certain style and level of mitigation that's acceptable? Is that, is that code as well?
Well, that's, that's the, well, so there's, there's two, that's the real advantage of the program that the Boulder County has set up with the sort of two parallel approaches, the wildfire partners approach and their code approach. First of all, their code also applies to renovations and retrofits to, to homes. So, you know, anytime someone wants to, whatever, whatever your code would apply as far as a, say, a new deck or a roof replacement, then they would have to meet the, for that portion, they would have to meet the new code requirements. And parallel to that is the wildfire partners program, which has, has achieved a significant amount of success in, in existing residential properties as far as pushing and encouraging and then guiding people towards changing their outcomes. Now, you know, behind that, the underlying, the underlying driver to that is typically insurance. We're seeing in many areas in Colorado and other areas that are experiencing fire or areas that have, have the, the elements that would, that lead, would lead to the wildland urban interface concerns. You know, there, there's the, the sort of the carrot or the stick has been typically insurance. And I would not be surprised that moving into the future with, with the recent losses that we've had over the several years, that's going to become more and more of a driver.
Yeah, but can Netherlands create something like similar insurance asks within our code where houses are required to be mitigated 20 feet from their homes or something like that? I mean, we're in within our powers to do that, right?
Yeah. So they, so the, the, again, the, the real advantage of way, the way that Boulder County has streamlined the wildfire partners program, which is voluntary and the code is they, they ask for the same things. And so, and so as, you know, the, the, the code, you, you know, the cap, the, the town would be enforcing the code through your municipal and building code. But that, you know, concurrently, there would be this voluntary program that people can sign up for. And it's not the insurance companies driving the requirements. It's, it's, it's what, it's the requirements of, you know, the best practices and sciences that are behind both the, the building and municipal code and the wildfire partners program that drive it. The way that the insurance companies are engaged is they look at this and they say, oh, good, you're following good science, good best practices, and that's acceptable for us addressing our risk that we're concerned with. So we'll buy in. And if this person follows through with the program and ends up mitigating to the, to the requirements that the program asks, then we'll, we'll provide, we'll, you know, we'll give them a benefit. Either we'll provide them with insurance, give them a discount or whatever. So it's not, it's not the individual insurance companies driving it. It's, it's really still the program driving it.
Good questions.
I'm going to keep moving. I have a lot of questions. So reading the response to Susan's letter, I see that the second bridge in the town of Ned wasn't addressed because of it wasn't a concern for the town of Netherlands or it wasn't a concern for you guys? Establishing an alternate evacuation route for the entire town was not raised as a priority to the CPAL team to evaluate and therefore was out of scope for the project?
Yeah. So the, I mean, so we, as I mentioned, you know, there's, you know, on the list of priorities that the, that the steering group presented to us, the top priorities were the, were to have the wildland urban interface code or, you know, the building code, structure ignition zone issue dealt with. And Big Springs and because the comprehensive plan and the CWPP are up for readdressing, that was the, you know, the, the big chunk that they, that the steering team was asking us to bite off. It's not that other priorities that they want to deal with. Those were just the ones they wanted to address right away this year.
Oh, okay. I wasn't a part of that. What do you feel about the one bridge aspect, two lane road of our town? If there was a mandatory evacuation from one side to the other? I mean, do you feel like-
You know, I'll, I'll leave it up to, you know, I'm, I'm, I like, I'll, I did, I haven't looked at it, but obviously when we address the wildland Netherlands being, the entire town being a wildland urban interface, then we pass it off to the responders that are going to have to deal with the emergency and ask where, you know, if they feel that they can comfortably deal with an evacuation and a response in the current setup. And so-
I'm curious if they do feel good about that. So I'm just going to just move it on because I have so many questions. Susan had read something about how the egress was going to be reseeded into grass. And I don't know how you guys feel about that, because when grass grows long and tall and then dries in the fall, and then you have this egress road that people will be recreating on, there'll be motorcyclists accessing it even though they're not allowed to, and people hiking. And doesn't it seem like a bad idea to have the grass growing on there?
Tanya, it's Rick.
Yeah.
We're in concurrence. That wasn't an idea that I supported and would not look for that to be carried forward.
Yeah, I'd be really worried even just about the noxious weeds coming in once you get the, the login equipment in there and having to make that a focus of mitigating that in a big way. Also, because that thistle can be pretty intense when it dries. Okay. Well, that's good to hear. So then, and also respect to your letter that you wrote to respond to Kelly, you had said something about that the alternate route, oh, shoot, now I can't find that exact line, but you had said the alternate route would not go through a wetland at all. And wait, let me just find the actual.
Yeah, I know what you're referring to.
If you realize that it, because maybe you walked it recently and it's winter, that where it crosses over to do the switchbacks, that that's literally going direct, right through a wetland that's about ankle deep, knee deep in certain spots of water. And so, I mean, how do you guys feel about a road in the wetland like that?
So actually, our, the response was that we, our preference was that the access to the Doe Trail did not go through the ref- wetland. We didn't, we didn't say that it would not. And that, that would entail, as Chief Dur mentioned earlier, that would entail making arrangements with private property owners for their, yeah.
Definitely my, I mean, I just can't see any good way to get across that wetland. So I'm hoping that that goes, that goes well. And so, um, let's see what my notes here say. I think we're getting to the end of what my concerns were. I had a suggestion to Lindsay, which if you really want to reach the neighbors, I think the route needs to be marked so that they walk through the wetland, walk, switch back up the hill and go up to Doe Trail. And likewise, the exact route on Wildwood, because for them to have an opinion, I think they really need to walk it so that they can picture themselves driving through it, and then they can give us some honest feedback about how they feel about it. I don't think a brochure is really going to cut it. I think we need to like mark it so that people, I know we can't do field trips because of COVID, and also it's just so hard to schedule with people's time. So if it could just be a self tour guided sort of situation where the trees are just kind of marked with some paint and, or maybe even better, just like a orange ribbon, that would be better. I think that's the best way to reach the neighbors. Definitely like a brochure saying, hey, come walk this. This is what might be happening, and we need your feedback. So I think that really the more people who actually can walk it and they can give, they can start to feel like, okay, can I drive this? I think that's how you're going to get the neighborhood involved if you're interested in that.
Tanya, again, I'm, I'm completely on board with that. I think the other thing that we can probably do is some form of a GoPro virtual.
Okay, that's cool. Like just download the sat. I mean, I'm really techie, not smart, but-
Sure. But, but, but I, I agree with you 100%. And when Lindsay talked about getting public opinion and making sure everybody's involved in the decision, I don't see any way to, for the public to be well informed without us putting up some flagging. I can tell you, again, we're pretty darn close on some refinements here. And I want to make sure that we have engineering buy-off, that what we're presenting is physically capable of being done. So that's kind of the stage where I'm at, talking to a couple, the for, working on the Forest Service engineer as well as JVA, the towns engineer. And I'm going to ask him to re-put some eyes on that entrance into Doe Trail. So that if we, if we, if we somehow don't get access off that private driveway, I agree with you. I've got no interest in being up in the wetlands. So I'm going to ask the engineer to relook that a little bit.
To re, yeah, to get that handled better. Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks, Rick. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks. And we'll change ASAP. That's what I think. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Tanya, for the questions. Good questions. Kelly, Molly, thank you guys for the presentation and for fielding all the questions. Yeah, I like, I agree with Tanya that we probably need to schedule within our own town board some stud, work, study sessions early next year to look at the changes to our town code to adjust the entire town to being within the WUI interface and what we can do in terms of adopting building codes and wildfire mitigation across the town. I know that my wife and I have worked with wildfire partners in the last couple months. We finally had them come out to like, take a look at our house and look at all the, you know, massive amount we need to do. And more we can do to get the rest of the town to do so as well is going to be critical as we move into the 21, 21 fire season. Any last questions or thoughts from the Board of Trustees? If not, again, thank you, Kelly, Molly. Thanks for presenting. Thank you, Rick, and Cynthia for commenting, both Ricks for being online. This is going to be an ongoing process and look forward to making progress on it. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, we are going to move forward into the action items part of our agenda. But two little quick items to take, or two things to take care of, I want to bring up before we do that. The first is something to bring up with a bit of a heavy heart. I would like to, and it, it's kind of fitting to do after a wildfire presentation. I would like to have the known Board of Trustees, we'd, I'd like a moment of silence because we lost two of our own recently. Cody and Shelby Allen, who are locals, who are firefighters over in Gilpin County, who have been part of the Netherlands community for their entire lives. We lost them over the weekend. And I would like to have a moment of silence in their memory. So let's just do that now. Thank you, everyone. I know that there is a memorial service later this week. Information's available online for anyone who would like to participate in that. Moving on to the, the action items from that, the first is a minor subdivision, rezoning and lot line dissolution at three East Fifth Street. And due to the fact that trustee Danforth and I are, you know, own the house next to that, we felt it was appropriate that we recuse ourselves from this action item this evening. We still have a quorum to handle it on the board. And trustee Taylor, I believe, will be taking my place as operating the logistics of this item as trustee, or Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer is not with us this evening. So Julian, thank you for stepping up. On that, I will be recusing myself. Trustee Danforth would like to make a statement for the record about recusing, and then we will hand this over to trustee Taylor.
Yes, as Mayor Larson said, I am recusing myself from this item due to owning the property next door to it.
Very fine. I am drunk with power. So this is an action item. We'll begin with the board. And I have read through these documents and I'm feeling pretty comfortable with them. And I don't have any specific questions about it. Miranda, do we have someone here who would like to present the, an overview?
Yes, me. I'm here.
Will you please present the overview?
Yes. And Cynthia is also on just to back me in case there are questions I cannot answer. And then also the Mary Huggins, who is the trustee for the Margaret A. McMullen Trust. She is on the phone. So I'll turn it over to her after just my quick rundown here. Before you tonight, our three applications, you have a minor subdivision, a rezone, and a lot line dissolution. We, these do have to be addressed separately, but they, as you read in the packet, they do all correlate with one another. So first, the applicant had submitted a minor subdivision replat application for the properties at three East Fifth Street and 34 Forest Road. It was noted in the packet that when this came before the planning commission in July, there was concern that they increased size of three East Fifth Street could allow for more density by right, really could mean that potentially three houses could be developed on those lots. With that concern noted, Huggins, I mean, and the trust had agreed to conditions that would restrict future subdivisions to no more than two lots. And that can be, that's outlined in the restrictive covenant, which is in the packet. We indicated that a minor subdivision is regulated by the section 1721C of the municipal code. And the planning commission did approve this in July pending approval of the lot line dissolution. Let me kind of go over to the rezone. So you've got these two properties that are north and south adjacent under the same ownership. However, they're in two different districts. Three East, East Fifth Street is located in the medium density residential, and 34 Forest is in the low density residential. So they are looking to rezone so that they are- Um, so they are looking to rezone so that they are compliant with one another. So rezoning is regulated by section 16252B of the municipal code. And we outlined what those stipulations are. And then the last piece is the lot line dissolution. So the application was submitted in conjunction with the rezone because a lot line dissolution cannot be done when there's two different zones. Um, so that's why you have that extra piece. And so currently the dissolution would not impact the location of any of the remaining lot lines within the subdivision or create any non-conforming law. And lot line dissolution is regulated by section 1773C. So those are your three applications. In addition to those, there was some conversations regarding easements. So there are two easements in place. So the first is for a trail, which is a walking path that connects um Northbridge Street to Forest Road. And some community members had contacted Cynthia and spoke to kind of the benefit of of having public access. And the trust is open and agrees to that use as a formal trail easement. And then there also is an easement for the driveway. So that is required by Colorado law in order to provide access to Forest Road to 34 Forest Road um over three East Fifth Street. And then in addition, as discussed, there is the restrictive covenant that stipulates that future lots may only have two, there will maybe two lots um with lip, a two lot limit within the development of that north northern point. Uh, this went before the Planning Commission on a few different occasions. When it first was reviewed by the Planning Commission, the neighbor Julia, Julie Mania came forward about a boundary dispute that has since been resolved with a quick claim deed. And Julie did email the Board of Trustees um to also indicate that that has been resolved. In completing a town review, there were no concerns. And then in your packet, we've got a series of maps and I think kind of this last one does help to kind of identify all the different pieces of the application. And then lastly, we have proposed motions in this packet because these three items do need to be handled separately. And Mary, do you have anything you want to add?
No, no, you explained it. Thank you.
Trustee Taylor, unless Cynthia's got anything, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, uh, then we'll first address it uh through the board. Uh, I've already commented that reading through it, it seems to be very well uh thought through and I don't have any additional uh questions. The documentation seemed quite thorough. So I'll go uh to the other board members. Trustee Apt, do you have any comments?
I don't. It looks very straightforward.
Trustee Corvallin, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Trustee Coombs Esmael, any comments?
No, looks logical to me and I'm glad that the neighbors have already uh been involved and gotten their wishes and concerns met.
Absolutely. I, I think I would like to uh uh second that and comment that uh this seems to have been very well managed with the neighbors, uh good communication with everyone. Uh, amicable arrangement seems to have been addressed. Since this is an action item, I'm going to throw it out for public comment. If you are in the public and you would like to make a comment regarding uh resolution 2020, uh well, any one of these resolutions, uh, please speak now, raise your hand or uh unmute yourself and just start talking. Seeing no hands and hearing no comments, I bring it back to the board. Um, having no uh comments from the board, I think I'm going to send it to you, Miranda, to uh call for a vote. Oh, I, I'm sorry. I am not following the rules. Uh, let, let me be much more formal and and drink in the power that uh I am drunk with. Do I hear a motion to approve or reject resolution 2020 dash 44 regarding the McMullen Minor Subdivision?
Trustee Coombs Esmael, I move to approve resolution 202044.
This is Alan. I, I second.
Having a motion and a second, Miranda, call the roll.
Trustee comes as my own.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trusty apt.
Yes.
Trusty Corvallin.
Yes.
Very fine. Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve or reject ordinance number eight one four amending the zoning classification for property known as three East Fifth Street and amending the official zoning map?
I move to approve ordinance number eight one four.
This is Alan's second.
Very fine. Miranda, having heard a motion and a second, would you call the call?
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trusty apt.
Yes.
Trusty comes as my own.
Yes.
Trusty Carvelin.
Yes.
Very fine.
I would also move to approve resolution 2020 dash 45 for a lot line dissolution on Lot A of the McMullen Minor Subdivision.
Alan's second.
Very fine. Miranda, call the roll.
Trusty comes as my own.
Yes.
Trusty Taylor.
Yes.
Trusty Corvallin.
Yes.
Trusty apt.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. It looks like it's approved and I turn it back to the mayor.
Coming by surprise how quickly that went.
The dark times are over.
I looked at your practicing guitar, you know? Well, thank you, Julian, for taking over. Uh, you know, I feel good now. I feel like I can go on vacation for a couple of months and just hand things over to Julian. He can keep this town running. So this is good. All right. Well, thank you, guys. Um, we'll move on to the second item under our gen, action item, which is the or the marijuana ordinance and is going to be introduced by none other than trustee Taylor.
So actually, I thought it was going to be introduced by uh Jennifer, but that's perfectly all right. I've read through it and commented on it. Uh, there is, uh, so this is uh an amendment to uh the Netherlands Municipal Code that will allow for, as we discussed in prior VOT uh discussions, uh for established buildings, for established structures, and no more for cert, selling uh retail marijuana. We are not addressing the question of uh production, uh manufacturing of marijuana products. That is to be addressed by the uh Planning Commission tomorrow and uh after that discussion, it will undoubtedly be coming back to the VOT as a zoning issue. For retail marijuana, the uh Jennifer has produced these, this proposed change to the Netherlands Municipal Code. I will only warn everyone, if you've read this through, it does in fact call out a marijuana store as a person. And that seems kind of odd. I confronted Jennifer with that and she responded, that's from the Boulder code. So we're kind of stuck with it. So just bear in mind, we're calling a store a person. And certainly if anyone has any questions, Jennifer, I'm sure will be able to make, uh, will be able to clarify what a person means in this legal sense. But this is strictly a restriction on the total number of retail establishments that will, we will allow to be licensed within Netherlands, Colorado. Uh, Jennifer, do you have any additional comments regarding this?
The only comment that I have that's in addition to your introduction here is that I did make a change to the draft ordinance that's in front of you tonight. Based on um one of our conversations at the meeting, I think it was the November 18th meeting. And that is, we talked about trustee Coombs Ismael had brought up um the changes to, I believe it was section six dash two fifty, which is duration of license. And a lot of that language um that's in your packet tonight was struck. Um, and there was a request to put that language back in. Um, and I did do that. However, I modified it. The language talks about an inactive license. And um according to the Colorado statute related to um marijuana establishments, an inactive license must be enacted or or out of operation for a period of one year. Um, not 60 days. So the change here that I wanted to point out to you was that inactive essentially means um is a period of one year and not 60 days, consistent with state law.
All right. Otherwise, this is uh what we've been discussing at a, at our previous meeting. So. All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Julian. I will open us questions from the board. Uh, we will just uh start. Trustee Coombs Esmael, questions regarding the uh proposed ordinance?
No, I think this makes sense and I think one year is a reasonable amount of time anyway. And if it's Colorado state law, then that's what it is anyway. So great. Perfect.
All right. Uh, trustee Corvallin.
No, it sounds good. It's what we've been talking about. Thanks.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah, today, I, I've been looking through the um ordinance and I was wondering if there's anything in there to determine what happens if there's a single license available, but multiple applications for that single license. How do we deal with that?
The, the draft ordinance that's in front of you tonight doesn't address that. Um, we thought and um trustee Taylor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Marijuana Committee will look at that and bring a proposal to the Board of Trustees at a later date.
Uh, I will note that that is, uh, I, I'm glad you brought that up. That is not actually on the agenda for the Marijuana Task Force, but it's certainly something the Marijuana Task Force could discuss. I recall, Jennifer, that in our previous discussion, we did decide to separate that out from this ordinance change. Uh, however, um, I will have to talk with you about uh future steps regarding how we will, how we make a proposal for uh this approach. Certainly, if the Marijuana Task Force is to take this on, uh, we would want to invite you to have a presentation regarding what you know about other municipalities and how they are dealing with this, because I know you have some background in this. So thank you very much for reminding me of that. Uh, I will simply say that it's not officially on our agenda, but I will see to it that it gets onto our agenda.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I think that's the only issue. I have everything in the, the ordinance in front of me. Looks great. I just want to make sure that we have something in the code to help us figure out what, what we do in that situation um where there's multiple applications. So we have rules that we can follow um to make that selection. So uh, yeah, that's all I, my only comment.
Right, Lindsay, uh, our licenses are non-transferable. And so the only case where a license could become a problem would be in that transition from one owner to another. And I know I had a discussion with a Netherlands citizen who was referring to this as a golden ticket. So it's important that we not turn this into some magical thing that can be uh, that can be a source of uh attempt at uh monetary um misuse. So yes, all of this is important and we'll make sure that this is handled appropriately.
Perfect. Thank you.
Trustee apt.
I think it looks good and uh right along the lines of what we've been talking about. So I think we should approve it.
All right. Uh, well, as it's an action item, we will first throw the floor open to anyone from the public who would like to comment on this. Uh, you will have three minutes and as usual, somehow catch my attention by speaking up or waving your hand. Seeing and hearing no one, I'll bring it back to the board.
Uh, sorry, Mayor, uh, I was, I was raising my hand, but I, I guess he couldn't see me.
Also, yeah, no, the video wasn't on there. So yeah, please, Matthew, go right ahead.
No problem. Um, well, uh, uh, thank you so much for, for the floor and and to all the trustees. Um, you know.
Give us your, let us know your name and whether or not you're a town resident.
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Matthew Schifferin. I'm actually uh not a town resident, but uh I'm a, I'm a town uh visitor. Um, uh, spending up a lot of uh time up in, up in the mountains around Netherlands, so coming into uh into your area quite frequently. Um, I'm a Colorado native, uh, lived in, in the, the state for pretty much my whole life. Um, I am a cannabis owner of a, a business uh based here in Colorado. Um, uh, our, our parent company is called Pioneer Interests. Uh, we own about six stores in the state, uh, two cultivation facilities and a, and a manufacturing plant down in, in Denver. We employ about 175 people in the state. Um, and uh, my wife and I, it's, it's a family owned business and um, uh, you know, uh, frankly, we, we were looking um at opportunities uh to, to really get up into areas uh near and, and surrounding Boulder. And um, and frankly, Netherlands was, was sort of top of mind, uh, since we, we actually spend a lot of time in the town and um, uh, you know, we, we pass through it quite frequently on our, on our way up to uh um, uh, up to the mountains. And uh, and so, you know, this proposition, I, I, I agree for a, a town of 1,500 people, um, you know, if, if four dispensaries can, you know, potentially seem like a lot. Um, I think at the same time though, uh, having grown up in the mountains and, and uh experienced what other municipalities have done, um, you know, traditionally they allow for sort of a, a free market environment. Um, not all, right? Many, many markets put uh sort of caps or limitations on zoning requirements. Um, or, you know, the actual uh, uh, number of cap on licenses, but more often than not, um, you know, uh, uh, certain, certain municipalities will leave it to sort of a, a free market economic sort of situation where um, you know, if a town can't support five dispensaries or six dispensaries or seven dispensaries, those dispensaries close down. Um, but I do think, you know, i- i- uh, having formerly worked in the spirits business, um, we owned a, a couple of distilleries, one here in the, in the state. Um, and, uh, you know, from, from the liquor business uh to cannabis, cannabis currently in Colorado is a 2.25 billion dollar a year industry. Um, you know, spirits for context is about one and a quarter billion dollars. Uh, so, you know, whiskey, gin, vodka, liqueurs, bitters and so forth. Uh, I know that I'm getting close to, to my three minutes of, of time here. Um, but, but you know, our, our, our viewpoint is that um, that oftentimes municipalities can support uh multiple stores because this is in fact a larger category uh than you necessarily have in beer or wine or spirit. So it can afford uh more stores for a, a particular municipality similar to your own. Um, our view, if we were to bring a store to uh, to, to Netherlands, uh, our view would be to look to collaborate with other small businesses, try to find uh collaborative opportunities, likely go to rehab an existing property that is sort of neglected right now. That could be a, a, a sort of hospitality, not necessarily technically, but more of a, a, a gathering place in general. Um, and, and be strong community steward. So, you know, I, I think uh, from a, um, uh, you know, a head count here that, that the, the, the Board of Trustees seems pretty uh, um, uh, well positioned to, to make a vote. Uh, but however, you know, I, I always seem to try to make an argument at some point. So I just wanted to raise my hand and, and mention it, but um, obviously I, I think, you know, uh, not being a resident of your town, I feel like I have no place to speak here, but appreciate the, the time and uh that, that you gave me and, and nevertheless, uh, willing to, to make a point. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that, Matthew. And I'm sorry I didn't see you waving your hand earlier. Joys of Zoom meetings, you know. Uh, but thank you. Uh, anyone else from the public like to speak? I will say either wave your hand, there's Matthew, and I may or may not be able to see it, or just please start speaking.
Mayor, you may want to note that when you say raise your hand, you're referring to a WebEx function that is available from the uh, uh, from one of these menus, although I'm not sure which one it is. Um, so yes.
That is correct. There is the raised hand.
But I'm not seeing it. Yeah.
If you hover over your name under the participants list, you can see the hand there. And then just a reminder to Colin users to press the star six. If you've happened to end up muted and you wanted to speak.
Both very good recommenda, reminders. Hearing and neither seeing virtual hands or real hands being waved at me. I'll bring this back to the Board of Trustees. Any further comments or motion regarding ordinance number 813?
This is Alan. I move approval of the ordinance.
This is, this is my a second.
We have a motion and a second. Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
And so it is passed. Thank you, Julian, and everyone who was part of the Marijuana Task Force for the work you've done on this and the work you're going to do on the remaining pieces of it. Moving along, we have something on the Netherlands Downtown Development Authority Wayfinding Park project. I believe it was going to be introduced by our DDA member Claudia Schoffler.
And she's likely on the phone.
That's what I was going to say. It might be one of our Callan users. Welcome, Claudia.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm really excited about this. We've been working on this for quite some time. And of course, COVID slowed us down a little bit. The reference point for me on this wayfinding is if you look at the signs that are put out in front of the train cars along Highway 119 there, where John from the Mountain Man Store, I think Brightwood Music has one, the brewery has one, those for us are, and I've tried to be out there too, but I came in late in the game. So, there's really not any room. They're really not optimal. They don't really tell anybody what we need them to know. And that's just a small example of what goes on around town. So, we've been working for a while on, I called it signage, but it's officially called wayfinding programs now. And we're really excited to have a company that we feel comfortable working with. And so, what we're asking from you guys tonight is to approve our resolution for us to be able to move forward with just the beginning phases. It's actually phase one, where this company comes in, and they've done it all over the country. They have some very good references, to give us some idea of what we want to do, how we want to do it. And it entails a lot of work with pulling in some of our partners in town and any interested parties to figure out exactly what we're looking for. We were initially, interestingly enough, thinking of large signs and directing people towards parking, towards businesses, restaurants, trails. We want to include everything of interest in town. And with the COVID, we've had time to kind of look at it. And we came to the conclusion that we really think we probably want to be more on a street level and encouraging people to walk. Obviously, we'd have to have some direction for parking and so on. But once we get them into town, where they can go, and hopefully get them walking around town and visiting every place in town of interest, whether it's a commercial or a trail or the carousel, visitor's center. So, I think you have in front of you even our resolution, our aim, but also a letter from Merge, which is a company we've chosen to work with. And I think he outlines pretty well what's going to happen in phase one as far as assessments, recommendations, design drawings, preliminary sign locations, magnitude of the budget, and priority and phasing strategy. So, at this point, I'll leave it to you guys with any questions.
Thank you, Claudia. I know we've been talking about this for a long time. And I'm, you know, I'm really excited that you guys are pushing on the idea of a walkable city, directing people to, you know, we have the copious amounts of parking we have, just not quite in our downtown area, to enable people to get out of their cars and walk around to the different commercial centers within Netherlands. So, I'm excited about that. Other trustees, I'll open this up for questions, beginning with trustee Taylor. Do you have any questions for Claudia on the DDA?
Claudia, yes. My only question was, are we, have we investigated if the county is going to have problems with signage near their highways? Are we making, so we're making sure we're well away from anything that would get the county upset with us?
This company has experience in working with counties and municipalities with all those kind of regulations. So, we expect that to be addressed right away with whatever we come up with. We'll make sure that it meets, obviously, CDOT, Town, you know, all the standards that we need to meet.
Very fine. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Trustee Apt.
This has been, this conversation has been going on for quite a while. A few years ago, when I was, lays onto the DDA, was a long conversation. I think it is also kind of wound together with our parking situation. Now, how do we, we have parking lots like over at the Presbyterian Church and the one that Ron Mitchell has been providing. You know, we can't seem to get people, particularly people who work in town, to use them. But then tourists, I think, are sometimes coming into town, not finding parking and having difficulty. So, you know, aside from finding businesses, which I think is really important, I think getting a better flow through town and making it easier for people who visit to park is a good goal. So, I don't think it's, it seems like a lot of money, but it would serve a lot of multiple purposes. And I think it's not trivial to give people reasonable signage without getting obnoxious, as well as giving them guidance as to, you know, where they can find the businesses they want, or where they can find a reasonable place to park. So, I'm supportive.
Thank you.
Trustee Corvallin.
Well, I'm a little bit confused. We're going to, phase one's going to cost $22,000. But that, is that actually going to give us the signs? And do we have any, like, images of what these signs are going to look like? I like, I feel like we have signs. Like, when I'm walking along the path, there's signs that say this way to there and this way to that. Also a little confused, because we have the RTD parking, and then we have parking by the BNF, and then we have parking by the waterfront. Are we just going to have, like, arrows pointing all directions? Or, like, are those arrows going to be on the highway? I just feel like it's going to be kind of a mess. And I really have never in my life had anybody tell me they couldn't find their way around the town of Netherlands. But that's just me. I'm surprised that this is even, I wasn't, I, it's like, kind of news to me. I'm still, I'm here looking like you guys were giving everybody such a hard time about making some parking spots. And I'm looking for, is, do I, if I click on these things here, the attachments, I'm going to get pictures of what the signs are going to look like? Because I have it off right now. Let me turn it on, my wifi.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Claudia.
I was like you. I was like, wait a minute, what, you know, what are the signs going to look like? And I very quickly realized that I don't really have a clue how to do this, which is, and nobody on the board does, because it's not our expertise. But that's why we're hiring this company. And I think your questions are valid. But because we don't know, and we don't want to spend a lot of time and money putting out signs that are not necessarily what anybody wants, that's why we want to hire this company to do a lot of that for us and to guide us with that. It would involve a whole lot of engaging people like you to tell us what you think also, and what you would like the signs to look like. I tend to go with a lot of color and crazy stuff, but that's not necessarily what most people want. There's a rustic theme. We could do a hippie theme. We could do mountain. So, anyway, that's what we don't know. And that's why we need somebody to help guide us through that.
I'm looking at $22,000, and it doesn't look like we're actually going to get any signs out of that. It looks, are we? Because it says including. So, that's insane to me. I'm sorry. I just can't, I can't understand why we need to pay somebody that much money when we could probably just, like, get people together to make some signs. And I just, I'm going to say that I don't, I know the value of a dollar, what it could go for in this town to actually help our businesses right now that are just struggling for, just to, like, pay their rent and stuff. I think they'd be giving everybody $1,000 right now.
Which we're actually doing, Tanya, by the way, as we have done.
I know you have. I know.
I understand. I was, I'm sorry.
I know you have been given.
I was right there with you. But if you look at the signs that we have now, if you look at John's Mountain Man sign, but it doesn't, you know, there's no room for me to put my sign out there. There's no room for.
By the paths. There's already, like, signage for the, oh, this way to Mud Lake, this way to the visitor's center, this way to the, I just, when you're, I don't know. But I just personally, $22,000, $23,000 to not actually have an end product is a lot, in my opinion, right now. But that's just my opinion. Not, I just clicking on this, this proposal, and it just doesn't really have, I don't understand why it's going to take them $14,000 to make preliminary sign plans.
I understand. Believe me. Fortunately, in the world we live in, you spend that kind of money so that you're not wasting it further down the line. Once we get done with phase one, we will know exactly what we're doing. And we'll have so much buy-in that everybody will be excited about it.
How much the actual signs will cost, like, the end result of how much this project? Because once you invest $22,000, we're not going to just be like, no, we can't, we're going to continue on until it's done. I mean, are we looking at another $10,000, I think, the time it's over? Or what did you tell you? Or they tell you?
We don't know what we want to do yet. So, it's hard to put a price on it. That's part of the problem.
Fair concerns, Tanya.
This is Steve Carew, also the Chair of the DDA. I was hoping if I could chime in here to help Tanya a little bit and maybe the other board members.
Please, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, what this proposal is about and what this company will be doing is pretty much creating a holistic plan for the town. And it's not going to be just new signs coming in. It'll be about planning a holistic approach to signage with our town. So, I think a lot of the small signs that are, it'll be sort of a unified approach. So, a lot of the small signs now that maybe are confusing and everything will not be part of that plan. You know, we can't take down all different signs. But it's a very holistic approach about, you know, how to direct people to the main parking lots around town, many of which people, tourists and locals don't know about. And then also getting people out of the cars and finding particular businesses within town and perhaps having kiosks at key points, like over at the RTD, which could become our new gateway for the town. So, this is, it's not about producing signs as much as taking us through a whole process that engages the whole community and stakeholders to figure out what signage is needed. And then they help us with designing those and getting them construction ready so that we could put them out to bid. So, I just wanted to say that it's more about the whole process and engaging the whole community in a very well-thought-out way. That's what this company does. So, I just wanted to add that part.
Thanks, Steve.
Trustee Danforth, did you have any questions for the DDA?
No, I just think that this is a good project. And I agree with the fact that we need a holistic approach to our signs for our businesses, because we do have a hodgepodge of signage around town. Some are hand painted, different colors. And I think, you know, with our influx of tourists and everybody, that having signs you can easily recognize as an informational sign or wayfinding would be really good to have. So, I'm in favor of this. So, thank you.
Great. Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yeah, I'm generally in favor of this proposal. And, you know, I really applaud the idea of bringing it down to the street level rather than really just trying to service cars and traffic. I think that's a really great idea in the way that we should be going forward. And I think that the aesthetic quality of these is going to be really, really important. And so, you know, I look forward to seeing what this, what this company proposes. I agree with Tanya that the cost is exorbitant. It's a lot of money, but I do think that it's an investment for the real long term. And I think if we look at it that way, we'll be able to see some real benefit out of this, especially for navigating folks who are trying to walk around town. And I know that a lot of us think it's obvious of how to get from place to place, but I'm not sure that it necessarily is for everyone. And I think this will be helpful.
Thank you, Eric. Trustee Taylor, did I already hit you? I've lost track of who I've been.
No, you've hit me already. I was going to talk after everyone was done.
Okay, I believe that is everybody. I think we've heard from all the trustees. I want to open it up before we, final comments from the board. Let me open this up to the floor for any public comment. If anyone from the public would like to speak for three minutes on the wayfinding proposal, now would be your chance.
Ron Mitchell here.
Ron, please, the floor is yours.
I'm not sure whether at the end, well, I'm getting a lot of bounce back. But I'm not sure whether in the end this is going to comply with the current sign code. But I think there probably have to be a lot of modifications to the current sign code. And I would think everyone should be cognizant of that as we go into this, because it is an expensive proposition. And I would hate to see it hung up because it violates the current sign code.
Fair point. Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Kathleen Chippai had also emailed a comment on this. So, I'm going to read that into the record. Kathleen Chippai is 17-year business owner and 30-year Magnolia resident. My personal opinion is that this is an insane waste of $22,750. I think we can do better than spend this kind of money for 14, possibly more, signs to direct people around the whole half file through town with the help of business of a business from Pennsylvania or Miami. My opinion, we have local artists who can help, who can figure out where the signs need to be and what they need to say and what they should look like. And I think being made locally is better than not and cooler. And because of the size of town, I dispute, quote, "Wayfinding has been identified as a major obstacle to the success of local businesses because tourists do not have the information they need to find parking easily to find specific businesses within town. The longer wayfinding is postponed, the longer economic vitality, or, excuse me, the longer economic viability of Netherlands will jeopardize," end quote. You can see from one side of town to the other when it comes to businesses. People who stop in Ned actually stop in Ned and walk the town. Come on now. A good point was made in Ned Talk. What happens when businesses change? Businesses in Ned tend to have a short shelf life, and it's not because of lack of signage. Sorry, but I think this is an expenditure that is wasteful.
Not seeing any. We'll bring it back to the board. I know, Julian, you had something further?
Yeah. The price does seem fairly high for what it is we're trying to do. I think we do have a wayfinder problem. Certainly, if anyone parks in the middle of town, they see signs all around them, and they know where the stores are. If someone parks at the RTD parking lot, if someone parks in front of St. Rita's, they don't have any indication of where anything is. And of course, we know where everything is, but a new visitor to the town doesn't see that. I actually have to say that it does strike me that we may have talent within Netherlands to resolve this issue. Because the issue would be based, the way we would resolve this would be by understanding how traffic moves within the town and identifying where people tend to park, and then coming up with a way of, I mean, it, and then the more I talk about it, the more complicated it sounds. So, but it's still, it's still, I admit, it's pretty expensive. But I do think it would help to have a way for a brand-new person entering the town to know immediately where the brewpubs are, where the restaurants are. And this may involve something like, something would look almost like a mall map. And if these folks have experience doing this, I do see the value of assessing, of letting people who are experts in this field at least get us started. There's nothing in the world stopping us from producing the signs locally if we decide to. But I have just talked myself into voting for this, and I apologize for making everyone witness me. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Julian. No, I agree with you. I think, like you said, you know, I think you, like you said, you know, the more you dive into it, the more the complexities of the issue start to become clear. And exactly as you said, this is the phase one. And when we get to the phase two, phase three implementation, where we're looking at the actual construction of signs, that is where I will definitely be arguing that we should go with local sourced, local artists, local manufacturers, carpenters. So I think that is a very, very critical point there. Any further thoughts? Yeah, please.
So I'm sorry, I should have said this upfront. One of the things we asked the companies when we interviewed them was would they be willing to work with us on having everything done locally? And that was one of our top criteria, whether it was, it would be both artists kind of input, local artists, local manufacturing, all of that we swept in because we're we're with you on that. It's very important that we keep all of this as local as we can once we know what we want to do.
These have comments on this or do we have a motion regarding resolution 2020-46?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one last thing, which is that sometimes what you like, when you put in, when you say some places in some direction and you have an arrow that points there, right? Then you become almost obligated to ensure that people can follow that arrow. And so if the town does have connectivity problems, like between its trail systems or its sidewalks or its roads and its streets, that putting an arrow and pointing it in that direction in the best direction for people to go will help us in in navigating those other infrastructural challenges. So I think wayfinding actually becomes this kind of superimposition that we can follow as a as a blueprint or as a guide to help us build a better town. So I do think it's it's more important than just than just the sign, right? It actually creates infrastructure.
Good point. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd motion to approve this. Sorry, is it 202046?
Correct.
I motioned to approve 202046.
Alan, so it's trustee Taylor.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second from trustee app there. Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee humans is mild.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
No.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
And with that, the final resolution of 2020 passes five to one. Thank you, Claudia. Thank you, Steve, for coming out tonight to speak to us on this. And we look forward to seeing the results of phase one.
Great for the board trustees.
All right, the last action item is a will be introduced or told us, talked to us by Miranda.
I'm really brief. I just put together all the 2021 Board of Trustees dates. Typically, sometimes we have to move dates to accommodate elections, but or holidays. It does not appear that we have any issues, but I'm just looking for the board to let me know if there's any changes. Because if so, we would have to draft a resolution to adopt a meeting change. Or if everyone's okay with the dates as listed.
You know, the only thing I see, you know, I've been looking at the calendar and, you know, like you said, we don't hit the usual July 4th issue because July 4th is on the weekend this coming year. The only meeting that jumps out at me that we will will want to leave on the schedule because it's around budget season, but may will likely try and cancel will be that number 21st one. Because that is getting rather late in the year and close to holidays. But I think we should leave the calendar as it stands because of the necessity of posting the budget before the end of the calendar year. Any other trustees have comments?
Looks good to me, trustee Taylor.
I'll try to be there.
Yeah, yeah, unless anyone's going to speak, wants to speak up about any particular meeting, then this action item is actually a non-action item because we are simply going to have the meetings as planned.
I hope to take no action.
I'd say I guess it should have been more of an informational, but yes, it's a no action if there are no changes.
Right, right.
I second Julian's inaction.
All right, well, there we go. We can all schedule our our activities for the next year of alternate Tuesday nights now. Thank you all. That concludes the action items for this evening. We do have this one discussion item that'll be introduced again by Miranda and update on our Envision 2030.
Yeah, so we had a wonderful plan, I think, for 2020. But unfortunately, I think just some of the challenges surrounding COVID, I mean, just it took a while to really get feedback from the community. We got off track with the original proposed timeline for 2020, which had, the goal was to end with 2020 with that Envision 2030 statement. We're obviously not there. And so in in getting a lot of feedback during the assessment phase, when I talked to a lot of community members, I've actually really outlined, I think, a more comprehensive plan for tackling this. So I'll just briefly overview it because it's in the packet. But I just wanted to clarify first, I think there were some questions about what strategic planning model I originally adopted for this. And so it is the A, B, C, D, E model. I just think it fits best with what we're striving for. So we did the assessment phase from August to December where we collected feedback from the community. We met with all of the boards and got feedback from them. Every department within town staff completed a survey. I collected 58 community surveys, both online and through our outreach sessions. And then seven external community-based agencies complete the survey. I've got quite a bit of data to work with. So my recommendation moving forward is that we create an Envision 2030 committee. The goal of the committee would really be to review some of the themes that I've identified from these surveys. I mean, to just really make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees on some of the visions, values, guiding principles and goals for the Vision 2030 document. So with this committee, my recommendation is that there are 15 committee members, which is pretty typical for this level of strategic planning. And so it'll be one member from each of the boards, five external, external community agency members, and five community members at large. The goal, if you all approve it, would be to release applications and treat it like a board vacancy, where they would file an application saying why they want to join the committee. And then the Board of Trustees would appoint them at the January 19th meeting. My recommendation is that this committee then meets biweekly. And I expect that the time commitment would be two to four hours per week. Once the committee has been formed, they'll really dive into the components phase of the strategic planning model, which again focuses on taking those surveys and developing that vision, values, guiding principles, major goals and specific objectives for Envision 2030. I've outlined in this aim, kind of really strict kind of guideline that I'd like to use a timeframe of how we move forward. It would have the board meeting quite a few times. And then it would also include public charrettes. The goal would be for those to occur virtually on varying days and times. And then if by April we can't be in person, we'll do some in-person charrettes as well. Once there's kind of an agreement on those vision, values, guiding principles and goals, the committee will then come back together to set an action plan that includes the targets and standards of performance as well as the measurements initiatives and projects that will come forward as a part of the action plan for Vision 2030 with the goal of having everything wrapped up with an actual Vision 2030 plan by June 2021. So as I said, here's the proposed detailed timeline where I kind of talk about what would happen within each week. And if we adhered tightly to this timeframe, we would meet that goal of adopting a Vision 2030 action plan by June 15th, 2021. So tonight, I'm just looking for the feedback from the board. If I'm on the right track, if you feel like we should adjust anything, just your general feedback on this new proposal for Envision.
Well, for my part, I think it's a a great approach to it. I mean, obviously, this has been and made especially difficult, not at all in how we intended this year. But I think this is a good way of sort of adjusting to the COVID realities and still making progress. I had a, if you can scroll up on the screen just a little bit, my one thought and concern was with regards to the application deadline is in like one week, it says December 21st.
So that would be the date that applications were released and then they would be two on the January 11th. Yeah, they have three weeks, like a normal advisory board, and then you'd approve them on the 19th of.
Okay, yeah. And other than the fact that it's being released in 2020, not 2021, but that's just a typo. So, yeah, no, that makes sense. So we can start doing some outreach to find community members, members at large. And yeah, I think this is great.
Oh, yeah, thanks for, in the timeline, there's a typo. Thank you. Yeah.
There's a couple little ones, but not that significant. Other trustees, feedback for Miranda regarding the plans for Envision 2030?
Looks very comprehensive. It looks like a great plan. My only concern is virtual meetings with 15 board members and how that's actually going to play out. And I do think that there would have to be a very a lot of attention paid to meeting management in order to get some serious work done during those biweekly meetings. And just wanted to throw that out there as something to think about.
Yeah, I agree. And I did a little research on kind of what the average kind of strategic planning committee was. And 10 to 15 seemed to be the average. But the the feedback I got was that a lot of that work is done outside of the committee. For the time that everyone comes together, they do a lot of external work. And that the time, the biweekly meetings are more so for updates, but that all of the actual work is done. And that's why it's a two to four hours a week commitment because there is expectation that tasks would be done aside from those biweekly meetings.
And do you, do you imagine that those those tasks outside of the meetings would be done in in smaller kind of subcommittees or as individuals?
In smaller subcommittees. So originally, when we had Envision 2030, we had broken it into kind of like six categories. So there was like arts culture and then there were schools. And so the thought is to still stick with those categories and then assign two to three members to those groups so they can work on developing kind of the visions and the goals specific to those that that area, those categories of focus.
Perfect. That's just what I wanted to hear. Thank you, Miranda.
Open floor for other trustees.
So Miranda, I don't know when this may be interesting or useful, but I would like to talk with you at some point about the process of a pre-mortem and a red flag review. Because those are ways of assuring that a project, once scheduled, stays on schedule and meets the original requirements. And what I'd like to do is just talk with you about what those are. And then if you think they are appropriate to this process at some point, I'll be more than happy to come in and give a talk about how it works.
That would be great. I will follow up with you.
Yeah, this is Alan, and I think it looks great. I appreciate all the work that was done to lay it out and understand the challenges of COVID. I guess one question I had was, it seemed to me that we did do some gathering of feedback for a few months there. Community members were giving you feedback, BOT gave you feedback. I thought boards and commissions did as well. And I'm wondering, did we get much of that and can we compile it? So this discussion can start with what we've heard so far from the community.
Yes, so I do have the feedback from all the boards, all the town staff departments, and then 58 community members and seven external agencies. And so we actually have gone through and started to pull out some of the themes. Obviously, we really want the committee to help us finish that process. But we will start the discussion based on the themes that we've identified.
That'd be great because I think that 58 people is, it's impressive that that many people actually participated. And, you know, we just want to know, we want people to know that that giving us that feedback was meaningful. We did hear it and hear, hear it is here, some of what you told us as a starting point. Yeah, let's, let's go from there, but thank you.
And we actually, the survey is still up on our Envision page. I I didn't want to take it down and just three days ago, three people took it. So I still do plan to leave it active because I think as the word gets out more, people will be more apt to continue to provide feedback. Now, obviously, when we get further down into this process, we will have to probably stop that. But I do have it open in the interim so people can continue to take that and give us their thought.
Good, you know, we did have a request from Barbara Hart for the Mountaineer to give us, give her some kind of overview of things we've done in the past year. And maybe thanking people for their participation thus far. And if we can pull together anything that says, here's some of what you told us, that might be a good topic for the the newspaper.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, then we will move into our final staff and Board of Trustees reports for the year. And of course, our town administrator is out at her daughter's wedding this week. So I, and it just means I get the honor of doing this next bit. I'm going to get to do her staff report. And it's good because this is, because of COVID, we didn't get to have our town volunteer party, our town staff party, all the end of the year things that we really look forward to doing every year because it's our chance to recognize the incredible work done by our town staff on behalf of all the residents of Ned. And this year, the employee of the year is our right on here, our very own Miranda Fisher. She has just gone above and beyond with everything this year in terms of dealing with the media with helping with businesses, with everything at Town Hall to live streaming our holiday lighting ceremony just last week. And has done it in a, in a way that has just brought, has been wonderful for the entire community. The way she deals with towns, with other town staff, with members of the public, with myself and other members of the Board of Trustees. Miranda, thank you so much for everything you've done. And I can't imagine a more well-earned employee of the year this year than yourself. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I I do also want to say it was, there was a close second this year with a member of our public work staff. Jen Landon has also done incredible work for all of us. And under harder circumstances than yourself, Miranda, sorry, but you you get to sit in an office and she has to go out in the, in the cold and the rain and deal with backed up storm sewers. So I don't, I, we, I really love when we have the town holiday party and can really talk about each of these employees to themselves. I know Jen's not on the phone with us or on the call with us, but really appreciate the work she's done. I appreciate the work done by every member in Town Hall, the community center, our public works, our police department, up and down, water and sewer. Everyone is just, it is such an incredible honor to work with all of you all year long. And thank you all so very much. The remainder of the town administrator's report is in here. It's a lot of the updates, the standard updates on COVID. As everyone's aware, we have the vaccines are being distributed now. We've had the first ones in Colorado this week. And we do not yet know how soon they'll be making it up to us. I have been filling in, myself and Miranda have been filling in for for Karen on those COVID calls this week and haven't heard yet on that. But as soon as we know, we'll be passing those details along to everyone. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but we really, as a community, need to hold steady on staying safe, wearing our masks, staying socially distanced and staying home as much as possible. Because the cases are are climbing. We are up to 18 in in Netherlands. And we want to make sure we get through this with as few as possible as we, as we get, as we move forward. So still going to be a hard couple of months, but we're going to get there. Lot of other, yeah, the details in here about, you know, things we've talked about. So I'm going to then hand this over to our town administrator for the town financials and treasurer's report, town administrator, town treasurer, sorry, Rita. And the final financial update for 2020.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, trustees and members of the public. I'll be presenting the November financials to you tonight. The 2020 budget still continues to trend with an increase in tax revenue. The twenty twenty budget still continues to trend with an increase in tax revenue and a decrease in expenses when compared to the projections. The department's heads have been and still are operating with contingency budget. The report includes the following highlights. In the general fund, total revenue year to date totals one million, seven hundred and sixty-six and six hundred and one dollars. Which is a fourteen percent decrease from the budgeted amount. This decrease is mainly due to the budgeted grants revenue of three hundred thousand dollars, which has not been received. Year-to-date expenses in the general fund total one million, six hundred and eighteen, eight hundred and twenty-seven, which represents a twenty-seven percent decrease from the budgeted amount. Overall, the year-to-date change in the actual fund balance equals an increase of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four. In the community center total revenue year-to-date totals three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Which represents a very slight decrease over the budgeted amount. The total expenditures into the community center fund total year-to-date total two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Which is a twenty-two percent decrease from the budgeted amount. Overall, the year-to-date change in the actual fund balance equals an increase of a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. In the water fund, the total revenue year-to-date totals eight hundred and four thousand dollars, that are eight hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight. Which is a thirty-nine percent increase from the budgeted amount. The total expenditures in the water fund total year-to-date totals five hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three. Which is a eighteen percent decrease when compared to the budgeted amount. In the sewer fund, total revenue year-to-date totals seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen, which is five percent above the budgeted amount. And the total expenditures in the sewer fund year-to-date totals eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four. Which represents a six percent decrease over the budgeted amount. And finally, in the streets fund, the total revenue is eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eleven, which is two percent lower than budgeted. Eight hundred and ninety-four, which is a recent decrease when compared to the budgeted amount. Over. Change in the actual fund balance equals an increase of twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. That's it.
Thank you, Rita. Does anyone have any questions for town? Not. We will go to the next report, which is from the town clerk slash deputy town administrator slash twenty twenty employee of the year, Miranda Fisher.
Right. So over the last thirty days, I've done eleven new or renewal business licenses. Uh, from liquor, just working on finishing up the caribou rooms renewal. Marijuana is busy always at the end of the year. So I have flower collective, silver stem, and then harvest house. Just turned theirs into me today. So I'll be working on their renewals. Um, we've issued four additional building permits within the last thirty days, which I believe puts the building department at around a hundred and ten. Building permits for the year. Um, so that's been great. Core requests, I had four core requests over the last thirty days, which I've outlined, the types what were there. Couple grant updates that are a little bit unfortunate, but as we dove into both of the fire grants. Um, it ended up not being eligible. So the first one, we have thought just because we're a smaller community, we'd be eligible for a twenty-five percent match. Um, but when I talked to one of their representatives, they did confirm that our community would have to do a fifty percent match. And we felt like after talking with Rick Henderson and and Chris Pelletier, we'd rather save that ten thousand dollars from the conservation trust. For future grants that maybe require a twenty-five percent or less match, just to maximize our resources. So we are passing on that. We have our our eyes open to some more mitigation grants. Um, same with the fire relief. So when I talked to their representative to turn it in. He told me that while mitigation was approved for funding, it was highly unlikely that they would fund that. Because they're really looking at funding communities that have unbudgeted expenses related to the fires and less so on mitigation. Um, so she and I are supposed to talk next month. Um, if there's leftover funding, she may just give it to us, which would be great. Um, but we didn't end up actually applying for the grant. However, one good outcome that came out of that is I'm actually going to sit on the grant review committee for that grant. Which I think will be a good opportunity to really know both first, how the community fundation typically funds grants. And then just like, what are the strengths of other grants that could help us in the future? Um, so that's kind of one positive outcome. And I'll be tight in with the foundation, so we'll get more grants. The last is kind of fun thing, just kind of a plug for our holiday season. We did have the Santa at the bank event last weekend. Um, so what's kind of left is our candy cane scavenger hunt. So just a reminder. They're asking people to count the number of bundles around town, take a picture with them like Officer Eric and Nikki did here. Uh, you'll then put it on social media, tag the holiday mountain market, and you'll have a chance to win some prizes. So here's our fun flyer for that. All I have.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Miranda. Anyone have questions for Miranda? If not, uh, Marshall Larry John's one of our Cullen users?
He is.
Okay, please, Marshall.
Larry, you may need to star six yourself.
Might have just star sixed himself mute.
I know, I think so. You're there. Larry, are you there?
Okay, let's try that.
There we go.
We go.
Sorry about that, guys. Um, evening, board. Uh, first things first, I can't say enough about Miranda being the uh. Employee of the year. She makes my job a lot easier and um well deserved. So enough with that, but fantastic choice and the town's lucky to have her. Um, staffing update. We did have the uh another process that we were going through to hire a couple of officers. Um, our two candidates we liked the most ended up washing out. They just were not suitable for employment. Based upon previous history at other agencies. So unfortunate, even though they interviewed well, when you start digging in their background, it just wasn't appropriate. So. Um, keep moving on and keep looking. Um, COVID red update, you know, we had a couple of really only one major incident. Um, the business in town and um worked our way through that. It ruffled a lot of feathers, but you know, I think we've got good compliance and doesn't seem to be an issue. Uh, we've only had one mask complaint mask complaint uh since the upgraded COVID red status. Which is really amazing. We were getting at least a few a week. Uh, so people are really just starting to think it seriously or just be compliant. Um, and I'm proud of the town, the way that they've responded and are all working together. Uh, especially the businesses. It's fantastic to see the ingenuity in trying to keep their businesses up and running. And look at what a lot of them have done and what they're still trying to do. Keep business in the door. It's it's amazing. And I'm thankful thankful to all of them. Um, welfare checks, just across the whole county, they're just way up, I mean skyrocketed. Um, we had six last month in Netherlands. Uh, the details are in here. I don't think we need to get too much into the specifics of that. It's very well laid out, but um. You know, it this COVID stuff is really hitting a lot of people hard and financials surrounding it and just all the drama. So. We got to get through it soon. Uh, PD and uh Rangers assisted with the uh holiday mountain market and the Santa at the bank event. Uh, I thought it went pretty well. I actually brought the grandkids up and we did it tour through the drive-through and um. I was kind of impressed. It I think it went really well. Uh, the OT, as you guys know. You've uh gone ahead and given us the money to buy a new vehicle. That's fantastic. We're getting a Tahoe. It'll be fully equipped. Uh, it'll be sometime probably in late January or February when that's complete. Um, we were able to save a little bit of money by reusing a radar unit from a vehicle that's going to be. Uh, dismantled and sold. And then we had a radio that was um brand new in the box in the back. So. Uh, radar unit, I should say, is going to be repurposed and we had a new radio. So that's going to save some money, which is nice. Uh, and then just a positive note for the end of the year. Netherlands officer Eric responded with uh Ned Fire to a in-home birth of a young baby boy or a infant baby boy. Um, healthy, everything went well, um, other than an unexpected in-home birth. So. Ended the year on a positive note there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Chief Johns?
This is trustee Taylor. Just uh, thank you very much. Uh, Marshall, the uh work that you and your team do is is inspiring.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up, Public Works, Chris.
Thank you, mayor and the board. Um, yeah, so a couple of things. Um, the TIP project, I just let you guys know that the um project is moving along. Um, we have a page on the website to to uh for residents and and folks to to look up the latest concepts and get information on that. Updated on a biweekly basis. Um, I think moving through uh the various advisory boards to inform and and get feedback on the project. And uh continually changing the the um drawings as as feedback comes in. Um, I'm also meeting with the businesses, property owners, um, meeting with all the um interested parties. Signs on uh notices on um property owners' doors to have them contact me. Um, if they require any information or call me or or any. And so um I just want to put that out there for for anybody who needs more information on this project or or wants to learn more about it. Um, please reach out to me. I'll also be reaching or I'll be attending the uh the planning commission meeting. Our night. I've met with DDA and Pro Sap and SAB, and then I'll do that again uh this week. And we'll actually continue going to uh every advisory board as I get more input and sort of refine this plan um every month. Then um I hope to come to the the DDA or rather the the BOT at your January nineteenth meeting. To bring hopefully a more refined plan um than what you guys might see on on the website. And again, it changes constantly. I'll probably have a different plan tomorrow. The uh the planning commission, based on feedback that really I I got today. So um, so that's moving along uh quite nicely and um. And um, I expect a a good project outcome from this. Um, the other thing is that uh I do have a grant opportunity that I'm working on of the um federal highway safety improvement program. And um, and it's basically prioritizes projects based on. Mental crash reduction and um looking at the intersection of Lakeview. Um, to maybe potentially put a turning lane there. Um, and unfortunately, Netherlands isn't, well, fortunately, fortunately and unfortunately for the grant. Um, Netherlands doesn't really have a lot of crashes. Uh, so it won't be a really strong application. Um, but the project does also prioritize uh projects outside of the the highway. And so I think there's a possibility, and I know that the um, we've been looking at this intersection for a long time. And there's desire to put a turning lane on there to help improve traffic flow. So I think it's a worthwhile uh chance to um seek some money. Um, the grant will pay ninety percent of the project, and I'll bring this to the DDA at their next meeting. Well. And uh, the project deadline is uh January thirty first, so I'll be bringing it to the BOT likely at your January nineteenth meeting. Um, to to apply for this funds. Then uh, we had a study done in summer two thousand eighteen that. Uh, studied the traffic in that intersection, counted all the cars during peak flow. Um, and wait times and analyzed uh multiple alternatives for what the best uh action would look like. And um, and using that data will be helpful in this grant. And they suggested that uh improving that intersection would cost roughly two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So for you, uh, for a CDOC grant, it's a relatively small amount of money. I'm hopeful that um they'll take a look at at Netherlands request and and maybe we we can get some more money. So. Um, another thing that I'm working on, uh, be happy to answer any question. Um, on tip or the grad or anything in my staff report.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, anyone on the board have questions for Chris? All right. None? Thank you, Chris. Next up is community center, Dawn.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. Um, I am happy to report my, uh, as you see in my packet, that the controls. We the Helen's Controls has been working on the conversion over the past couple of weeks. And today, community center staff trained with him on how to use it. And the new system is much more user-friendly than the old system. And um, it feels really good. We we have worked, we worked through some stuff and got some practice on it. And I just thank you so much for uh allowing us to have that installed. I don't have a whole lot to say other than what's in the packet. Um, this will be the last COVID testing this Thursday um of twenty twenty. It is unclear at this time. I have tried really hard to get um answers before this meeting out of public health and community health. And um, whether they'll be testing in twenty twenty. We're hoping that that will continue. And there has been even some talk out there of possibly vaccines at some point, but it's it, that's all talk at this point. So hopefully, um, they'll continue that testing program at least into twenty twenty. Um, congratulations to Miranda. I want to also say I can't agree more that she deserves that honor. And the Santa at the bank thing, we also brought grandchildren there and that was great. And that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Dawn? All right. Thank you so much, Dawn.
Right. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. Um, we'll move into board reports. Uh, my stuff is on the screen there. Uh, I've been, you know, busy with all kinds of random stuff uh for the last couple of weeks. But what I really wanted to talk to you tonight is I, you know, I've been thinking a lot of people, but I really want to make a point of thinking uh my fellow trustees. Uh, you guys, particularly uh our new group, you know, Tanya, Eric, Lindsay, Julian, you guys got thrown into this in. Into a virtual board situation. Um, joining a board of trustees is already uh in the fire hose and takes a lot of adjustment and work. And you guys got to do it while also trying to figure out how these meetings work virtually. And I just want to thank you guys for your dedication, for showing up to all these meetings, for coming prepared, for the questions you ask. Um, thank you guys so much for stepping up. And that doesn't mean I don't want to also thank Alan and Jonathan. I mean, you guys have been doing it for a while now. Um, but all new to you guys too. Uh, this board has been just absolutely wonderful to work with. And I really appreciate all that you guys have done. And I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one and when we can get into a a more normal board situation. and I'm looking forward to 2021 and when we can get into a more normal board situation and keep really working with each other. So thank you guys for all you've done and all you're going to continue to do. With that, we'll just go down and we'll go alphabetical here tonight. Trustee Apt, your final report of 2020.
Yes, I guess I don't want to repeat too much of what's said there, but we concluded our collaboration with Partners in Energy. It was quite successful, thanks to Miranda and a lot of people on SAB. We distributed over six hundred energy efficiency kits, and we now have a, I think it's a quarter page or one-third page ad in the mountain air asking people to install those LED light bulbs. So and I also want to thank everybody on the board of trustees. I've really enjoyed working with all of you and the mayor. It's been a real pleasure. And thank you for your support on the letter of opposition to the gross reservoir. A lot of support from the community, and it's a potential disaster, and I hope we can be averted. We're going to be moving into Solar, Solar Energy International. Garrett McDaniel's done a fantastic job, and we're going to try to get low-income solar for low, I should say, solar for low-income folks. And there is a county project that's looking promising. So anyway, happy holidays, everybody, and thank you to the town staff for doing a fantastic job, too.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Kooms is mail.
Hi, folks. Yeah, at the Boulder County Consortium of Cities meeting last time around, there was a presentation entitled Transformational Racial Equity in Boulder County: An Adaptive Process. It's a mouthful, but there is a link there to the video if you're interested in watching it. The folks who gave the presentation were Celia Jones and Courtney Prizmac, the Boulder County Racial Equity Project Manager and the Boulder County Equity Diversity and Inclusion Manager, respectively. So it really was county-focused and very specific to the county's issues as a whole. But if you want to know what folks are doing at that level countywide regarding racial equity, go ahead and check out that video. There's also, there was a special legislative session of the General Assembly, and they thought it might be useful to give all you folks a summary of all the bills that were passed. So that's attached to this report. They might actually be quite valuable for a lot of people in town, anywhere from, you know, local businesses to arts organizations and food pantries. So see what the assembly has done and see if it helps you in any way there's things to apply to. Yeah, I won't go too far into ProSAP. We're kind of working on the same things. We're going to take a more kind of community-focused approach to revising the Trails Master Plan that's going to involve some upcoming events, probably starting next quarter, first quarter of next year. So be on the lookout for those updates. And other than that, just want to thank my fellow trustees and town staff and especially people of Netherlands for welcoming me into local governance. It means a lot to me, and I always love an opportunity to serve my community, and hopefully 2021 is a bit better.
Thank you very much, Eric. Trustee Taylor.
Well, as usual, they don't let me into their meetings, so I have nothing to report. This next meeting tomorrow is going to be the first meeting where I'm going to be able to attend a good portion of it, and I will actually have a report at the next meeting. So I will simply echo what the others have said. It's been a great pleasure working with the people on this board and certainly been a great privilege serving the people of Netherlands.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing a report from you. Trustee Danforth.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you for all the hard work from my fellow trustees and town staff. This first year serving has been great. There's been a lot to learn, and I appreciate especially town staff doing our monthly meetings where we get to discuss things that are going on and help the trustees and help me learn to do our jobs the best that we possibly can. So thank you for all that, and being on board of the BZA, I'm like Julian. We don't have very many meetings. I only had one meeting back in July, and so I don't really have anything to report on that.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Trustee Corvillan. Tanya, you're still up. There you go.
Okay. Yeah. While, I'm super there, I mean, some people had regarding with the bus pool, should we have a reservation system? But I feel like they said that they were open to the idea, should there be a need? And I've yet to hear much conversation about it being a problem, so if it is a problem, please let me know. I'll try and keep a tally of that. And just regarding, there's a new arts, public arts group that's been formed this past year. That's pretty exciting. I haven't had a chance to go to too many meetings, but I think it's something to get pretty excited about. Public art could be a fun, a fun way to spend some of our DDA money that would help our local artists. So that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tanya. I believe we have reached the end of the agenda. Do any, does any trustee have any other business they would like to bring up before the close of our final meeting of 2020? Or we could look for a motion to adjourn.
This is Trustee Taylor. I move to adjourn.
Trustee Kooms is mail. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan. Trustee Kooms is mail.
Yes.
And we are so adjourned. Happy holidays, everyone. See you all in 2021. And yeah, thanks for all you do.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Bye, all.